$99.75.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions about the bills or discussion?
We have one question, well, we've got one question on tree removal. We have a bill for $700 for removal of the tree and we're thinking that we have the skill levels ourselves to do that. Can somebody explain to me why we don't have the skill levels to remove a tree for $700?
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
I'd be happy to take that.
Okay.
That tree removal was part of the Big Bend project. If you remember, we took away the grubbing and clearing from the Bornhof contract to bring it in within our budget means. And most of the trees we've done ourselves. We did have to hire a company because two of the trees were located in close proximity to private property and they were of such a size that we didn't feel that we could do it safely and so we hired a company to do it.
So we have removed trees by ourselves in other situations where we felt capable of doing it. But that tree was so, could have been cost us 700 plus if we had made a mistake.
Madam Chairwoman, that is correct. We went out and assessed it a couple of times and the potential liability didn't seem worthwhile so we did hire an outside firm for those two.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The only question that I had was on the, I think it's page six, where it says the prisoner housing, what is that exactly for the $25,500? What is that?
Your Honor, that is people that we take to jail.
Uh huh.
To Lander. We have to pay to house them in the jail.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know that, sorry. Um, okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
On that, when we take a prisoner to jail, do we take all of our, all of our people to jail or do we selectively take them to the City of Hope and not to jail?
Madam Chairwoman, whoa. We, everyone who, if a person is taken into custody just for public intoxication, the first effort is to the Center of Hope. Some people are not eligible to go there because of prior bad actions there, because they're walked away, you know, or whatever. So those people end up going to jail. But, you know, the bulk of people that we book in are not necessarily just for public intoxication. We're also booked people who commit crimes that if they're intoxicated at the time and they're not a good risk to come back to court, then they have to go post a bond. So that money that we spend is $75 per date per municipal prisoner. If a person's charged with a state offense, then we don't pay for that privilege to house them, but that is just for municipal prisoners. I also like to point out that that's, I'm not sure why it printed the way it did on the report, but that's two months' worth of prisoners. Our bill's been about $12,500 for the past two months.
Any other questions?
The reason I asked that question was, I had a man come into my office. His son had been arrested as he tripped and fell out of walking down the street and the police took him to Lander and they didn't take him to the City of Hope. There was no choice in the matter. That's why I was wondering if we discriminate and if we can take them to the City of Hope versus incarcerating him for 75 bucks and then releasing him the next day and his, the fine he got was for $75 so, you know, it's, I didn't know that you could trip and fall on a sidewalk and be arrested at the same time, but that's what happened.
Madam Chairwoman, I would just like to stress that sometimes the version that you get from the person who has been charged with a crime may not be accurate to the events that actually occurred. And so I can tell you that generally, if a person can be issued a citation and sent on their way with a pending court date, that's what happens. If they can't because of their belligerence or their alcohol intoxication level, then they go to jail if they've committed a criminal offense. If their only offense is public intoxication, then it's to the Center of Hope first and to jail second.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Steven, is there any further business?
No, madam. Oh, yes, we're gonna go for the operational summary, sorry. So at the very end of your packet, if you go to the very back, it just takes a little while to scroll through. You'll notice that there's operational summary for all funds. If you see the general fund, you'll see the revenues that have come in, that's the actuals, and then what the budgeted amount has been, and then expenditures, and you have that for each of the funds. And then it's broken down in the table on the right-hand side of what the actual numbers were. Is there any questions related to that?
No, but I appreciate you guys doing it. Because seriously, it makes it really easy just to hurry up, look at it, and move on. So I really appreciate it. Anything else? Is that all?
That's all.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
I now call the October 20th, 2015 regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Martinez lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And after that, Councilmember Larson would lead us in a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to serve as council, to work for the City of Riverton, for on behalf of our citizens that live here. Please bless us with insight and understanding that we might do and be the servants that Thou would have us be. Bless this town and its inhabitants that we might be richly abundance to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Father, we are thankful for all our blessings and say this humbly, name Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am present and declare that we have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda this evening.
Your Honor, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the agenda as written. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, motion passes. It's time for communications from the floor. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Okay, consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda, items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes October 6, 2015 regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes October 13, 2015 work session council meeting. Approval of the minutes October 20, 2015 finance committee meeting. Approval of finance committee recommendations for October 20, 2015. And a final plat, replat of Reach Foundation's second edition.
Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor.
Ms. Gibbon.
Claims to be paid in the amount of $749,709.14. Checks written for payroll and liabilities for 10 to 15 in the amount of $224,774.73. Manual checks in the amount of $1,823,515.88 for a total of $2,797,999.75.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Your Honor, I would abstain from the Bailey Enterprises and Wex portions of the bills.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye and motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation. The Extra Mile Day proclamation. Whereas Riverton, Wyoming is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community, would its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service? And whereas Riverton, whereas Riverton, Wyoming is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with the total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Riverton, Wyoming is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Riverton, Wyoming acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America is proud to support, Riverton's proud to support the Extra Mile Day on November the 1st, 2015. So that's coming up in a couple of weeks. Now therefore, I, John L. Baker, Mayor of Riverton, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2015 to be Extra Mile Day. I encourage each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. And so I'm gonna sign that today. And the, I just have to comment that when I came on the city council, I was absolutely amazed at the number of people in our community who come for a variety of reasons to the city to do service on various committees and projects that are going on throughout the community. And you can, you can look at Little League, you can look at, you know, all the athletic stuff that goes on in the city, you know, all the committees that the city staffs, like the airport and Forest Committee that deals with the one cent tax money for fixing streets and that type of thing. All these people are volunteering their time every week, every month, to come and help make Riverton a better place. And I appreciate the effort that you all put forth in that regard and thanks to anybody in the sound of my voice. The next item on the business, item for business tonight is the Splash Pad Fiscal Agent Agreement. Do we have the Public Works Directors' Report?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. The Riverton, Wyoming Splash Pad Group is a self-organized committee of volunteers interested in working towards the inclusion of a splash pad feature in city park, excuse me. The group has been meeting for several months and is currently working through the preliminary logistics of Splash Pad Initiative in Riverton. To do so, the group has already organized itself into several subcommittees ranging on topics from fundraising to splash pad design and other items pertaining to the inclusion of a splash pad feature in city park. One of the initial hurdles that the group has relates to fundraising, preliminary or primarily, excuse me. As the group begins to request for donations from the community and also solicit grants, it needs an organization to hold and manage the funds that they raise and receive. Consequently, the Splash Pad Group and city staff propose that the City of Riverton operate as the fiscal agent for the Splash Pad Initiative. You have all received a copy of this agreement in your council packet and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding that agreement. In brief, to just touch on a couple of the bulleted items within that agreement, first and foremost, the Splash Pad Group will serve as a fundraising and advisory committee to the City of Riverton towards the inclusion of a splash pad feature in city park. Next, they will remit all monies in the care and custody of the City of Riverton and the remaining monies after the completion of the project will stay with the City of Riverton for the future maintenance of that feature. The City of Riverton will account for donated monies separately and independently of other public funds and the administration of said monies will be done in accordance with city policies and procedures. Splash Pad Group will regularly keep the council and city staff apprised of their progress and also of some of the ideas that they have. They will also hold meetings and ensure that they are public meetings and will make a record of those meetings and provide a copy to the city clerk. The city will agree to facilitate this project in partnership with the Splash Pad Group. Both city staff and the Riverton Splash Pad Group have reviewed and are in agreement with this agreement. One of the priorities that the Splash Pad Group has is to ensure that donations made to them and managed by the city are tax deductible. As a government entity, donations made to the Splash Pad Group and managed by the City of Riverton will qualify for itemized deductions on an individual's tax return. If the city council chooses not to be the fiscal agent for this initiative, the Splash Pad Group could alternative, excuse me, alternatively work with the Depot Foundation as the fiscal agent. Today, the Riverton Splash Pad Group has operated as an informal committee working towards this initiative. City staff proposes that they actually become a formal advisory group to the city council. Similar to how the Parks and Trails Committee and the Beautification Committee work. Staff feels that doing so will strengthen the lines of communication and also better enable strong coordination and better facilitate the project. If this is the direction that the city council would like to go, you may direct city staff to draft a resolution and present it at the next business meeting to formalize this group. Therefore, at this time, our recommendation is that the city council enters into an agreement with the Riverton, Wyoming Splash Pad Group, allowing the City of Riverton to serve as the fiscal agent for the group's fundraising efforts. At this time, as you are noticing, there are members of this group in the audience and I'm sure they would be happy to address any questions that you have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I'd like to make the motion that we draw up a resolution to approve the city to be the primary responsibility for handling the money for the Splash Pad.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Sir, I think we could also add in that I think we should make it a formal advisory group. I think that's a good idea too.
Okay.
So I guess I would move to amend that motion to also include that we make the committee a formal advisory group to the...
Formal committee for the, okay? All right? All right? That'd be great.
Seconded.
Okay? All right? So let's see, the proper procedure here is to vote on the amendment.
Right.
Okay? So is there any more discussion, any on that particular amendment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. So we've amended it to include formal status for the committee. So at some point in time, once we get this resolution put together, you'll all be appointed. Okay? Okay. All right. So is there any other discussion on the, on the motion to establish this formal committee and have the city act as a fiscal agent? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Thank you. That's great. We appreciate you ladies coming and your support and just how appropriate, how appropriate. Here's this, here's this Extra Mile proclamation and so here's this audience full of people who are here tonight, got a project in mind and they're working on it, using their own time and resources and effort and money and pushing that forward, just like the skate park guys did. I mean, what a marvelous, what a marvelous thing in the City of Riverton to see all the people that chip in and help to carry the burden for the city. It's great. Wonderful. Your Honor, Lee?
I have one comment to make to the Splash Pad Group. In January, and I think it's the first Monday in January, the School District 25 Rec Board will have its annual applications for funds, so I would encourage you to submit an application and you can get that online to R4REC.
Thank you.
Okay?
Your Honor? I don't, I think they formally prepared something to...
Do they have, you guys want to talk? Okay.
Too late to change our mind now, right?
Yeah, we're ready for this, so, okay.
Well, my name is Dottie Baker. I'm the president of the Splash Pad Group. Since you've already voted on it, I won't waste too much of your time, but I did want to do just a little rundown. We started, I believe, at the end of August and I kinda did it on a whim. I put it on Facebook to see if there's anyone interested. I thought there'd be 40 or 50 people. I ended up with 2,000 people in our group in a week. We have since transitioned from a group into a page where we only have 600 people, but there's still significant community interest in it. We have a petition that has about 470 signatures, mostly from within Riverton, of people who really want Splash Pad in city park. I know there are some current concerns with the location. There have been some problems in city park and there's some concerns about safety. However, we think that this will go along with the CWSA skate park to improve it. I think the skate park has already been bringing in families and children and already been improving safety. We're hoping that the Splash Pad will do the same thing. We also want to make sure that the Splash Pad remains free to the public if at all possible. The maintenance costs we're looking at, and these could vary, right now we're thinking it's gonna be about $2,000 to $3,000 a year. It's also part of our goal to have money set aside to do five years of maintenance when the Splash Pad is built. That's our goal. And we're also hoping that will help cover, because there probably will honestly be a little bit of vandalism. We're looking at ways to minimize that. We wanna, you know, get ahead of the problem because it's reality, there might be some problems. But we think it will get better over time. We've been looking, we know maintenance money is a concern. We've been looking at different systems. First, recycling water and things like that, they cost more, but then they also lower maintenance costs. And winterizing is actually pretty simple. That's been a concern of some people. It's very similar to blowing out a sprinkler system, so you're looking at about $100 just to winterize it. One other thing we're looking at, but we have not decided is gonna have to be addressed in our planning meetings, is possibly turning it into an ice rink in the winter. We've gone to several different companies just to kinda look at building costs and a couple of them say it's possible. Our building costs range from about $200,000 all the way up to $500,000, but I think realistically 200 to 300 or 350 is a realistic building cost. We've looked at ways of getting this funding so that the city doesn't have to do anything. We have some fundraising plans. We have a whole fundraising committee and we're also looking at grants. We have a list of grants starting to apply for, including the R rec one. So we're hoping we can get a substantial amount of money within two years. It's realistic or not soon. We haven't started fundraising yet because we wanted this financial agreement approved first, but thank you so much for approving it and we hope to get this done. And I can, or I can attempt to answer any questions you have any.
Anybody? Lee? Do you have a target date when we'd like to see this completed?
Well, originally it was one year from August. I think realistically, two years from this October. I don't know if that's realistic or not, but that's what we're shooting for right now.
Yeah, they really wanted to play in the water this summer.
That's right. We do.
Thank you. Good, thanks, Dottie, for coming. We're not related, by the way.
Thank you so much for having us.
Okay, thank you. The next item is a liquor license dispensing room change request. City clerks, report, please.
Your Honor, Susan Skidmore is here in case you have any questions, but she's the one that filed with the city clerk's office, a change in the dispensing area pursuant to statutory requirements. Any liquor establishments that change their dispensing area has to have approval of the governing body. As you remember, when they were the temporary, they housed temporarily the trailhead, they moved, LaPierre moved the dispensing room down to the basement, now they're moving it back up for the current establishment that's in there. So it's just a simple minute action by the council.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the dispensing license room change request by the LaPierre.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Thank you. Resolution number thirteen twenty-three, providing athletic organizations the ability to create their own rules. Could we have the city administrators report?
Yes, your honor. Um, as you know, in our last meeting, we had, uh, the Fremont County Prevention Management came in front of us along with, uh, local athletic groups, um, in our October sixth, two thousand fifteen meeting, and they wanted their ability to set their own rules and more specifically to deal with, uh, being tobacco-free during their events. Uh, staff has done quite a bit of research on this and, and determined that some cities are, are adopting it by ordinance and there's others that are doing it by resolution. And the initial thought from staff was that we would do this by ordinance so that we could have an enforcement mechanism, so if people weren't following the rules, we could do something about it. But after further review, staff feels that a resolution would really be the best option. In most cases, the organization would be doing most of the enforcing anyways, and in dire circumstances, if the police had to get involved, they could and they could say, they could trespass an or, uh, uh, an individual if they were not following the rules. And so we really felt like this is a good option. Um, we also started with a, a resolution that talked about tobacco-free, and we just focused on the tobacco-free. Then we realized there's organizations that have a lot of different rules, more than just tobacco, and so we wanted to make sure that we give the option for them to have all the rules. And so what this resolution would do, um, in it, it gives them the option to make up their own rules, and then they would submit a copy of those to staff, and we'd bring that to the city council, and then we would adopt those. And so we've, uh, this would include athletic organizations such as Little League, Babe Ruth, Ryan Park for the use soccer, Riverton Junior Football League, Ice Hockey and the Skate Park, Skateboard Park in City Park. And so, uh, alternatives, we could still do an ordinance. This makes it formal and part of our code books, but it makes changing them a little harder, because you have to do three readings. Um, we could not even do a resolution. We could just, uh, the council could make in a, a formal motion, but really what a resolution is, is a written motion, and it makes it easier to track in the future. Or, um, you could make changes to the existing resolution that we have presented for you if, if there's changes that you would like. So our recommendation is to, uh, adopt a resolution thirteen twenty-three.
The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of resolution thirteen twenty-three.
Your honor, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the resolution thirteen twenty-three.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your honor?
Mr. Bailey?
I guess I have a question. So do these organizations, Little League, Babe Ruth, all those, do they formally lease the property from the city, or is there any agreement saying who's in charge of which piece and that kinda stuff?
Your honor, we, we do have MOUs with most of them. Um, for instance, with Babe Ruth and Little League, uh, it's a lot of the responsibility of, we're gonna cut the grass, that kind of thing. Um, other ones, we don't, like with the CWSA, we don't have a formal MOU, because it's set up a little bit differently, and so we wanted to make sure this is all-inclusive.
Because I, I guess my question surrounds, okay, let's say it, Ryan Park and soccer folks are down there having soccer tournament, so the, on that day, their rules apply, and on the next day, when they're not there, the rules don't apply? Is that how that would work, or? I, it's gonna be interesting for people to-
Yeah, your honor, what, how we've set this up is, it's particularly with their events or something that they would have going on. With CWSA, obviously, that can be an event almost every day, because as you see later, we'll be, proposed rules are being proposed for, and that would happen for every time. But the other ones, for instance, if you had a tobacco-free for the event, if someone was going in that park during the day when there was no one else there, they could smoke. And so really, it's supposed to be applied to their events and their activities.
Right. So that'd be a lot more open than us saying, in city parks, you can or can't do this or that, so, yeah.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Mayor votes aye? Sounds like we approved that resolution. Okay, the next item of business is the, um, skate park rules. Public Works Director, please.
Thank you, your honor. Um, in consequence of the resolution that you just passed, um, the Central Wyoming Skate Association would like to propose rules and regulations for the recently completed skate park in City Park. Um, you have in your packet, uh, those rules, rules listed. I will not go through them, um, line by line, line at this time. However, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Pursuant to the resolution, it does state that the city council needs to approve the rules and regulations prior to their posting. Um, and we're getting a lot of traffic and use at that skate park, and it's about time to put some rules up, and the Central Wyoming Skate Association has, uh, put a lot of critical thought into the rules, and we have had the local government liability pool, um, review the rules, and city staff has reviewed the rules and, uh, recommend them for your approval at this time. Uh, Mr. George Wright is in the audience. If you have any questions, I know he would be happy to answer any at this time as well. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, your honor, I have one question. I'd like to know-
Maybe we ought to, maybe we ought to do a motion first? Yeah, okay. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, to approve the skate park rules.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the, uh, state park rules.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All right, now we'll have discussion.
Okay, your honor. My, my question is, how soon will you have signs posted up there for, for this?
Um, answer your question, Councilman Martinez. I'm George Wright, resident. I'm the father of Matt, who has been involved in this skate park thing and for a number of years. Uh, we're hoping to have a mock-up. We've been to CB signs in town. They're gonna make up our sign, uh, but it didn't come through today. I've got printouts. I think you've got a copy of pretty much what it's gonna say, but it'll have city's logo at the top and the CWSA logo, and then these do not things on the bottom, visual, uh, no smoking, no bullies, no steel pegs.
And no snakes?
And no snaking, it says.
Snaking.
Kind of a whimsical, uh, statement there to the kids alike. We, uh, we're gonna have four-by-four posts, wood posts. It'll be aluminum plate sign on both sides, and it'll be encased in grooves on these, uh, four-by-four posts with, uh, sides as well as a top layer and a bottom layer, so it won't be flimsy at all. And it'll all be likely to be, uh, about four feet by five, whatever the layout will takes to, uh, put all this down on it. The skate park, as you know, is about done. Uh, had the sod and the, uh, sprinkler system, and we pulled the fence out, uh, last Thursday, and we've just got the sign to do and the sponsor wall to finish. It's, uh, just a minute, we're, um, we're pleased at the use it has. It's been amazing how the kids have flocked there and it's occupied all the time. One surprise to me at least was how many, uh, any given time, it looks like it are thirty-five percent to forty percent minorities using that skate park, mainly Native Americans. And these kids, all are, these young people, aren't too good at following rules and regulations, and they like their independence, they don't like to be told what to do, and, but they're coming around. Uh, we've noticed since it's been open for a month, uh, they're picking up their trash better and better and obeying certain things, but, uh, you know, besides the liability waivers and things, uh, on here, we want to make this a smoke-free, alcohol-free, drug-free, uh, location and, um, and all that kinda stuff. If any would like to see these, I got some copies, pass around. But, uh, we're delighted to have skate park, and, uh, we think this, the sign will be attractive. It'll be in, uh, forest green background with white lettering, and, uh, it'll be an asset to the park, and it will tell the kids, uh, what's up, uh, and what not to do, and good etiquette and, and no bullying and no, uh, you know, no fighting stuff. We, we know there may be an occasion that the, uh, the police will need to be called to an event or, or to a altercation of some sort, but we think we're making progress and it'll be a, it's a great asset to the city of Riverton. So any que- the sign should be written, go in the next ten days and installed.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Cannon?
Sir, I noticed on your thing, you say that protective equipment should be warranted, you recommend it, but then you talk about that children under eight must have adult supervision. Have you given any thought to putting a age limit, where like, again, maybe if the child's eight or younger, that they have to have a helmet? I, I've just heard a lot of comments, you know, about people watching them over there and that they're, quote, they're not wearing helmets and stuff like that. Do you think maybe that would be a good idea for like the younger kids to at least re-
It would be a good idea, but not enforceable with the state without having a helmet law, even for motorcycles. You can't force them to wear helmet and pads. You can suggest it, you can, uh, we, when we have our competitions, uh, we will enforce they'll all have to have pads and helmets, but for free skating out there, and I read a big, long article on the internet about the pros and cons of, of forcing and insisting people wear helmets on skate parks, and it, there's more negatives than positives about it. We hate to see, uh, anybody get hurt, and slamming on that concrete is ouchy, but, uh, it's gonna happen. Uh, I don't know how to answer that question, but everybody, and I've been to law skate park to glob- picture signs. I compiled these, our rules, based on what we gleaned from other, no skate parks enforce or have a mandatory helmet laws that I'm aware of, and, uh, we just do the best we can. Skating isn't as dangerous as you think. One of the least, uh, one point eight percent injuries compared to fourteen with football and, uh, basketball. Horse ri- horse riding is worst. Skate park is about the lowest of injury-prone, uh, activities, but, uh, anyway, we don't know how to enforce, as long, as long as we got the rule up there, we're already getting flak from, uh, some of the older guys that smoke while they're riding their bikes, and they're gonna, they're gonna moan about, um, putting away, but I hate to see these young kids, uh, exposed to that example, and, uh, so we wanna make it smoke-free, and I think we can enforce that. Um, the eight and younger, we do want to have, uh, these young kids are so young that, uh, they really not sure, they go against the flow of traffic and they, sometimes they get, uh, get hit by older skaters and bikers, but, uh, so it's good to have parents there watching the young ones, but I don't know how else we can, uh, control it. Any other questions?
Mr. Peterson?
With the passing of the resolution thirteen twenty-three, I understand with, and this is nothing against you guys, what you're doing, I think it's great, but wouldn't, the baseball has a baseball game on there, there's adults down there all the time, because you have coaches, umpires, officials and stuff like that that down there. Is this resolution gonna be enough down at the city park with this? If it's a bunch of ten-year-olds down there and then all of a sudden, a fifteen-year-old comes in there, who's to tell the fifteen-year-old he can't do that and who's to stop him? I guess my concern is how do we enforce this, other than just putting a sign up there and saying you shouldn't do it, but how are we going to enforce it to make sure it doesn't happen? Because I don't want my ten-year-old going down there and watching a bunch of sixteen-year-olds, you know, doing everything they can't do, but my ten-year-old can't tell him, you can't do that, because he's gonna get, you know, slid to the side. So I don't, I don't know if I have a question or just a concern about the resolution. Is that enough to cover that? Or how do we enforce it down there to have these kids follow the rules? Because it's easy for me as an adult to go and tell another adult, hey, take your-
I can't answer that. I don't know what we're gonna do when we see somebody smoking or somebody has a can of beer back over there that's underage. We will call the, uh, authorities if it's a legal, illegal activity, but these rules and etiquettes, just experience as the boys were, and girls, we hope they'll somehow control themselves. And, uh, but we, we're not gonna have a police presence there all the time, and, uh, us from the skating association club, we're not there all the time, so I don't know what to do.
Your honor, Mr. Weaver?
I, I think how it's gonna work is, obviously, the people around, if they find someone, they're gonna ask them to stop that, and if they, they don't, then they would call the police, and the police would come and say, here's the posted rules there, and they have a little bit more enforcement mechanism than the average Joe off the street, and I think in most cases, that would be enough to help them comply with that. I don't know if the chief has any.
Your honor, I think that's exactly right. I think we all have to just try to figure it out and do the best we can. I, I, I think that, um, the, the concerns are valid, but, you know, I've also been to fistfights at Little League where it's the parents who are the problem and not the kids, and so, um, you know, I think by and large, I think these kids are policing themselves now, and I think they'll continue to do that. I think for that odd, you know, person who just can't get along with the rules like any place else in society, a, a call to the police department will generate a, an officer showing up and trying to figure out the best answer at the time. I think the resolution tonight gives that officer some teeth to be able to say, I, I'm going to have to force you to leave because you're not compliant, so I think we'll just have to figure it out as it goes.
I know that, uh, the kids respect Matt and they listen to him, and he's been showing up there almost every evening, and he starts picking up the paper cups and the trash that the kids leave and puts it in the containers, and now they're following in line, and it's been a lot better, just to see the example. And, uh, so hopefully it'll kinda work out and the, uh, Parks Department people won't have to be out there pick, picking up garbage every day.
Right.
Anyway, thank you for your-
Thank you, George, and, and, and I, I, every time I've been down there and watched Matt ride, he was always had his helmet on, so he's setting a good example, and, uh, you know, if the older guy's a good example, then the younger guys will learn.
And he wears his helmet every time.
Yeah, so-
And, uh, and he needs those elbow pads, because he crashes and skinned.
Thanks, George.
I'm proud of old Matt, though. He's a good kid.
So are we. So are we. Thank you. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Okay?
We just been talking about.
Okay, that's great. Uh, we have come around to council committee reports and council member roundtable. Ms. Gibbon, have you got anything to?
I do. Um, I kinda wanna talk to everybody a little bit about the senior endowment board that we got to meet twice this- we got to meet twice this month so far. As a member of this governing body, I was appointed from the finance chair and so it's my duty to be on the finance, or the senior endowment board. Right now, I'm just trying to help in efforts to find funding for the senior center as well as understanding the past and present operations. It is my intent to ask the senior center board for documents pertaining to minutes, fee structures, revenues, expenditures, et cetera, in order just to gain a little bit of knowledge, cause I haven't been on it, but yet I see things that I'm not really fond of right now, so I'm trying to figure out the good from the bad. I'm really concerned about the funding and the longevity of the center in itself. I also feel as though it's my responsibility to address concerns and questions on behalf of the constituents. Therefore, it's my hope that the council supports me in the efforts of gaining some insight and provide a layer of transparency between the citizens who use the center. It's also my plan to keep you guys updated monthly so that we'll have information as well. I think that they're in dire need right now of some kind of a change. I don't know what that change is, but I know right now we only have about six months before their funding runs out, so I feel like this is a major concern that the council should be looking at. And we need to be able to come up with some kind of a resolution one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Well, that's, that's a lot of work to do. So, I know that's, that's a problem that we've been facing for quite a few years and, and maybe as we get closer to that day when the cash balance is zero.
Oh, no, we're there.
Yeah.
We're, we're there, like I have six months.
That's why I say six months, you know, as we get closer to that day in six months, then, then we'll get more serious about what we're gonna do to fix it.
But I wanna do that now.
Oh, yes.
Cause it is, it's, it's a major concern. I think that the seniors do, they need someplace to go and I think that most of the time that's the only meal they get, whether it's because of a wife or a husband passing away, whatever the case is, that's someplace they can go. And right now, their funding is just not where it should be.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, I think being proactive about it is gonna really help in digging deep and figuring out what the actual problem is and kind of trimming the fat a little bit.
At least understanding it'll help.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, last month I had an opportunity to go out to a dinner. Mr. Darren Coyle put together a pretty good organization with help with Dan Curra out of Casper, brought a lot of attention to the community. They did a hunting for heroes with some disabled veterans. They brought in twelve veterans from around the, the western regions as far as Texas, California, and stuff like that. Completely full everything, the, some of the farmers out there in the north gave up their, their permits so these guys could come in and hunt for free. A lot of members out there in the community really came together, helped out within Riverton. It was just an awesome experience, so it, it was awesome to see the, the community and the city really come together and be able to facilitate to some of those guys who've really given a lot and sacrificed quite a bit.
Thank you. Mr. Larson?
Attended the waste disposal district solid waste on Monday. And the most interesting thing was the solid waste on electronic structures such as televisions, computers. They're charging currently thirty-four cents a pound for disposal and they're really worried about people hiding solid waste in their garbage and not taking it out. And so they're looking, and in fact, they will, having a public meeting on it and they're looking at allowing that to be disposed of. You just take it there and put it into a specific bin so you can take your old televisions and instead of putting them in the garbage and hiding them, we'll dispose of them directly. So that's, that's exciting because nobody wants that material in a solid waste underground and then years later leeching out. So that's exciting. That was it.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
I don't have anything today.
Okay, Mr. Canaan?
Just a quick reminder to everybody that the Empty Bowl event's coming up on Thursday, October twenty-ninth. And again, go down to the Center of Hope, get your tickets and show up for that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, so the ten dollars a person, twenty-five dollars a family?
Yep.
Okay. So that's, that's a good place to go and, and have a meal and there'll be, I'll bet there's fifty different kinds of soup. So you can, you can, you can try all kinds of stuff. Last year, last year, the casino brought a great big pot of, of, of corn soup that was made out of dried hard corn. And you, and you look at that and think, hmm, I'm not sure that I am up to that and that was really good. That was, so there's a lot of great cooks in Fremont County and they're all down there showing off their stuff. And so for ten bucks, you can go and they'll even give you the bowl and you can take it So last year, they had a number of ceramics classes that, that, you know, put the bowls together and glazed them and, and so you've got some art involved and then there's also a silent auction, some, all kinds of crafts and that type of thing. And, and there will be, some of your friends will be there. I know it. I don't care who you are, some of your friends will be there. So you can go down there and join them and, and, and find somebody that you know. So this is a, this is a great event and doesn't cost a lot of money and because it's just before Halloween, they're gonna do some Halloween costumes for kids and, and maybe some other things that are fun. So I hope everybody in the community will turn out for the Empty Bowl and of course the proceeds of this, go to the Center for Hope and, and Mr. Canaan's on that committee and, and I used to be, so we're both, we're both, we're both proponents. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the pleasure of attending the airport board meeting and our new airport runway extension is just about complete. They've got probably a couple of weeks worth of work just finishing up and getting some of the electronics in place and that kind of stuff. So it's looking very positive and we had a little discussion on the, you know, current airline numbers and stuff, which was not so positive, downright depressing probably. But they are making a little headway, looking for additional possibilities for the future. So hopefully we'll have some good news here and when we get the runway opened up, that opens up our possibilities for bringing some additional stuff to town. I also had the pleasure of attending the Help for Health Hospice fundraiser Saturday and they had a wonderful turnout. Again, it's one of those organizations that just does amazing things in our community, helps a lot of people through a lot of very tough times and, you know, they did a great job and put on a really nice dinner and had a good fundraiser and I hope people just remember them, you know, when they need somebody to donate some money to because it's a very good cause and, and they take people whether they can pay or not, whether they have insurance or not, you know, they give services into our community again, like you were talking about, just a lot of good, quality people donating their time and energy to good cause when people are in tough shape. So it's, again, makes you proud to live in our community, you know, they do a great job and of course the community turns out and supports all kinds of organizations very well, as they always do. So, you know, it was good to, good to be there, so. Also, I guess, on a little more of a personal level, most people understand I've had a little incident down in one of my stores here the other day and I'd like to thank the police department for giving quick reaction and being on the spot like they should be.
You had a better camera down there?
Yeah. Well, I didn't wanna show you the good pictures, so.
So, thank you very much. Good, thank you. Mr. Weaver?
Yes, Your Honor. As you know, there's a movement in Wyoming to legalize marijuana. Earlier today, I sent you a resolution that Campbell County passed in opposition to the legalization. And so I just bring that up as a, as a topic. If the council's interested in passing a similar resolution, you could direct staff to do so and we would move forward with that. Tomorrow at one PM at City Hall, we're gonna have staff people from the three congressional delegations here. So if there's, just to sit down and talk about issues or concerns, they usually meet back here in executive session room or in the back there, so encourage you to come down and citizens can come down too. Tomorrow night, we have the meeting with the city of Lander, ourselves, in the Wind River Indian Reservation at Rocky Mountain.
No, we don't. Cancelled.
Oh, it was cancelled?
Cancelled.
Was that?
Oh, the end of last week.
Oh. Oh, wow. You can tell I'm, I'm, I'm in touch here.
Okay, I, I, I sent that out to council.
Okay.
So you should've seen it in an email.
Okay.
I don't think it made it, cause it didn't make it.
You didn't see it? You guys didn't see it?
Oh.
Well, okay. Sitting, still sitting in my outbox, but, okay, so, so at any rate, and part of the, part of the problem is that, that Rosa Salamanca seems to be interested in communicating only through me and so I, as soon as she does that, I, I try to forward all those on. And so at any rate, because of Starweed passing away, they decided that they, Shoshone tribe decided that they were not gonna wanna participate at that, at this point in time. So the next, the, 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 the next date is the, is the eighteenth of November.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry for whatever I didn't get done.
Also in your packets, as a part of the finance committee, I wanted to touch on this a little bit. This is the operational summary of all funds. I don't know if you had a chance to look at this, but it, it just really gives you a picturesque of each of the funds, both on the revenues and expenditures, what the actual is and what was, what's been budgeted. And we're at twenty-five percent of the year. We're, we're doing really well. Really, when you look down in this little corner box here, we have revenues and expenditures. So on the revenue side, we should be at twenty-five percent. We're in those and many over that, except in the general fund. And then on expenditures, we're actually under on the twenty-five percent. So we're, we're doing well in ways of, of overall funds. And then I'd just like to turn a little bit of time over to the police chief to talk about an issue that we're running into and a grant that he's applying for.
Good, Chief. Your Honor, just to put this on your radar, the state runs the Wild Link radio system, which is the public safety radio system across the state. They've upgraded their system and we got word that by August of twenty sixteen, our, our Wild Link equipment will no longer be compatible, so it's not gonna function. And so we've known about this for several months. We talked about it in our budget preparations for this year's budget, put a placeholder in the budget, if you will, for next year. But to that end, we think it may cost as much as five hundred thousand dollars to, to stay into the Wild Link system. So we've applied to Homeland Security for a grant to help either pay for the entire amount or offset that amount. It's not a matching grant, so I won't be coming to you to say if we accept this grant, we have to pony up whatever, but there is a big expenditure coming our way. We should find out on October twenty-second, that's when the final decision is made about the grant. We don't know when we'll get word, but within the next several days, we'll have some idea of what our, our benefit, if any, from Homeland Security will be. And then after that, we'll put it out for bid and, and kinda see what kind of prices we get, but we're concerned it's gonna be as high as five hundred thousand dollars to do that. So just to put that on your radar, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. Well, I do have a question. Does the city police department run on Wild Link all the time or is that a, a secondary system?
Sir, for us, we've gone completely to Wild Link about two years ago. We still pay to keep our license on our analog channel as a backup. We, we've rarely had to go to that at all. Wild Link has stayed pretty consistent for us over the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Weaver?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. I noticed my purple shirt, okay? It's Domestic Violence Awareness Month, the whole month of October, and so I, I got a purple shirt just so that I could show it off tonight and, and remind people, and remind people that, that one, that one woman out of five is, is abused. And so to carry on our discussion about the, the dialogue sessions, so November the eighteenth, I believe, is the next session and we do not have a location for that yet. Rosa is still trying to get that lined up and, and it was originally planned for Lander. But I haven't heard she, I, I, I see the communication to Mayor McComey to see if he can help get the community center or something and, but I haven't seen any response back, so. But the date is fairly set. So November eighteenth will be the next, will be that, that first session. So we lost, we really lost the first session in September because she couldn't travel. So then they were gonna combine the first two sessions into this one that was scheduled for tomorrow night. Now that has been cancelled and so maybe in November, we'll combine all three of the sessions into one. I don't know how she's gonna do that, but at any rate, it was important to her to try to get that done in two thousand and fifteen, so I don't know how we're gonna pull it all together, but it seems to be quite a challenge to get, to get all the participants together at the same time in the same place. But if we could make it work, if we could make it work, then it would, I think it would be a useful exercise. Give us an opportunity to talk about some of the issues that we're concerned about in a, in a setting that's kind of facilitated so that things don't get out of hand and, and that makes sure that everybody has an opportunity to get their concerns heard and then addressed in some way. So I think that's, I think that's an important thing to try to do and I talked to Aaron McKee with, with Word of Us and, and he was all puckered to come up here on the Wednesday night and provide us with a bus. He's gonna do the same thing on the eighteenth. So the, the folks from Riverton would be able to ride the bus to wherever the meeting is and then when Riverton holds it, I think we're scheduled to do maybe the last one, then the bus would be in Fort Waschiki in Lander and would bring people here. So we're gonna try to, gonna try to make that work so that, that people have an opportunity to come, mass transit, okay? Maybe we'll increase the participation a little bit. That's it. Anybody else have anything else they need to talk about tonight? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.